Honoured guests, fellow councillors, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to a very different Civic Awards evening. It's good to see you all, albeit virtually. But this is still a very special occasion for us. And probably one of the most significant ones that we have in the year. What I'd like to do is at the start mention that we have, I think, two Gold Freedom of the City Award winners here. One of them is the former Dean of Chichester, Nickless Franny. I can't see him on the screen, but is he there, David? No, he hasn't been. I know he hasn't been too well, but he's there. And the other one is Dave Tilly, presenting the Royal Sussex Regiment Association and the Queen's Regimental Association. Thank you. Suddenly, Covid-19 regulations has meant that our customary gathering would be regarded as illegal activity. As this remarkably held ceremony is first in the history of this, I will be visiting all recipients. Personally, in my role, to make a formal but safe and socially distanced meditation to you all. And we will have a commemorative photograph taken together. Then, when the time is right, we will all gather together in the assembly room for a reception. In the company with our civic award winners too. The Chichester City Council Civic and Heritage Awards have been presented since 1986. Since 2000, as were the past. In 2018, two new awards were created, namely a Community Award and a Building of Places of Interest Award. Tonight, we present Civic Awards and Community Awards. Civic Awards are presented to people who need not necessarily be resident in the city, but have contributed their services to the wellbeing of the city. They receive a special medallion and lapel pin. This shows one side, the historic overbonds of the city. And on the other side, the historic and enduring symbol of the city, the Market Cross erected by Bishop Storey in 1501. The name of the recipient and the year of the award is engraved on the medallion. We shall also be presenting the Community Award certificates to a number of organisations who have played a significant and valuable part in this activity. Particularly at a time when communities have never needed more to be strong. How impressed I've been with the work of so many local people during my two terms of office as Mayor of Chichester. So we will move to the Civic Awards. The first, I'll ask all those who wish to, to join in prayer from the Reverend Canon David Nason. Thank you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I invite you to just reflect for a moment and let us pray. Heavenly Father, we pray for your continued blessing upon our city of Chichester. All who live here and all who work in this place. We remember those who serve our city through the local councils, both as councillors and as employees. And we also remember those who keep us safe through the emergency services. Tonight, we give you special thanks for those who give their time, their talents and their resources to the many charities that we have to assist people who are less fortunate than ourselves and to aid those in distress. We thank you too for those who seek to enhance the cultural life of Chichester for our enjoyment and for our pleasure. We remember those who have served the city in the past and are now at rest. Especially those who have held this Civic Award. And particularly at this time of pandemic, we remember those whose lives have been affected by the current Covid virus. And as we remember them, we also give thanks for all frontline workers. Those who care for the sick and for those in isolation. Those who constantly work to make and keep our cities safe. These prayers and petitions, we ask in the name of Jesus Christ our Lord. Amen.
Amen.
I now call upon the town clerk to actually take us through the proceedings.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Good evening, everyone. And following up Chris's point, just to introduce myself, I'm Rodney Doguera. I'm the Town Clerk of the City Council. I'm a fairly new kid on the block in this sort of line of work. So you'll have to excuse me appropriately. Could I just make a general administrative announcement? If you're not familiar with this type of proceedings, because it's all very different tonight. In your little photographic box, there's a little button that says mute. If you press that and your microphone goes red in the nicest possible way, that cuts out all the background noise of, you know, DIY or someone doing their karaoke or whatever might be going on. But we'll now move on to the Civic Awards. And it's our usual practice to introduce the recipients in alphabetical order. And our first Civic Award winner tonight is Vincent Gray. And Vincent's citation will be read by councillor Anne Secuner.
Mr Mayor, fellow councillors, honoured guests, ladies and gentlemen. It's my pleasure to present to you Vincent Gray. Vincent has become well known in Chichester, having contributed several sculptures and public art to the life of the city. He's gained valuable experience in various parts of the world. Born in Cheam, he then spent his early life in Australia. However, the majority of his education was gained both here in the UK and in Sweden. And marrying Rita, his Swedish wife. In 1988, Vincent won the Edward Lawrence Prize for Sculpture. And in 2000, applied and was accepted to the Royal Society of British Sculptors. By 1992, he was working in England as technical assistant and project leader to Philip Jackson. And in 2002, he set up his own Vincent Gray studio at Chill Grove. And several of us have visited the studio and been greatly impressed with the work that he produces. He spent 10 years lecturing in art and design at Highbury College in Portsmouth. He has taught and lectured in sculpture and design in Sweden and here at Chichester University, Chichester Art Society, West Dean College, and now also private tutoring. Mr Mayor, the list of Vincent's work is extensive and covers both Sweden and all over our own country. Therefore, I'll mention just a few of his sculpturing achievements in public view, many of which we will have seen for ourselves and maybe not even realised that Vincent was the artist. He created a maquette and sculpture of our Queen for Sandhurst. And he has several in the making, including Vera Lynn for Ditchling, Sir Alec Rose for Portsmouth, Virginia Woolf for Rodmell and the Charlton Brothers for London. He's also created a maquette of Captain Sir Tom Moore walking for the NHS, which was displayed recently in our cathedral. He took part in 14 years of the gallery trail and seven years of Chichester festivities. While more recently, he's taken part in all eight festivals of Chichester. Apart from exhibitions further afield, he's exhibited at Pallant House Gallery, the Minerva Theatre, the Oxfam Oxfam Market Centre of Arts and in the garden of Cloisters Cafe over several years, as well as in the cathedral itself. Many of us will have seen the figure of Leonard Bernstein in one of the courtyard of St Richard's Hospital. And this was brought out to the cathedral during the 2019 for the Bernstein Festival. Vincent did that one. At Fishbourne, near to the children's playground at the Fishbourne Centre, there's a poignant memorial, excuse me, a poignant memorial to Lucy and Becky, teenage sisters killed in an accident. And at Selsey, there's the lovely Lapwing sculpture. Vincent created the bust of Saint Patrick Moore, which was displayed in Waterstones a few years ago to raise funds for equipment for our planetarium. And he's also raised funds for our central school. Very many people will know the touching sculpture of Royal Sussex soldier Maurice Patton, who was killed during World War I and which Vincent gifted to the city to stand in the Little More Memorial, standing at reverse arms. Vincent's figure of John Keats at Eastgate has drawn many tourists to sit next to the poet and be photographed in Chichester. And still to come, at present residing in the council house is the sculpture of Horatio Nelson and Admiral Sir George Murray, waiting for its installation in North Street, hopefully in a couple of months' time. Vincent is unselfish in his contributions to the life of our city, teaching, advising, giving talks and taking part, as well as making short films on his work. Mr Mayor, I commend Vincent Gray for a Civic Award.
Vincent, would you like to say a few words for us?
Certainly. Hello, Richard. And thank you very much for that introduction, Anne. Obviously, I couldn't have achieved anything without the help of many other people. And if it's appropriate, I would just like to mention some of the individuals and organisations that have helped me along the way and supported the cause. Chichester Council, of course, have been part of this throughout. The District Council, the Murray Club, Chichester Bid, Architect Peter Robson, Millwyn Foundry, Rotary, Carluccio's Restaurant, all those that have donated to the various projects, Oxfam Market Gallery, Chichester Cathedral, Traditional Stone, Chichester Library, and of course, my family, all of whom have helped me with my various projects along the way. So thank you to them and thank you for this honour being bestowed on me.
Well, thank you very much, Vincent, and very well deserved. And I look forward to coming and hearing your Civic Award in person to you on Friday.
I look forward to it. Thank you.
I think we now go back to the town clerk.
Yes, thank you. I just meant to say to everyone, if there's a slightly longer pause between me reading out the recipients, it's because of a technical issue on any editing we're going to make of this recording. So thanks very much, Mr Mayor. Our next award winner is Jimmy Upton. And a former, sorry, a past Civic Award winner, Mark Hillman, is going to read out Jimmy's citation.
Thank you, Mr Mayor, Lady Mayor S., City councillors, former Community Award holders, ladies and gentlemen. I've been asked to introduce the nomination for PC Jimmy Upton for a Chichester City Civic Award. Now, we all know him as Jimmy, PC Jimmy Upton. And he served as a city centre constable in Chichester for over 24 years. His name is really Kingsley. That's his real name. Jimmy came from his warrant number, which is CU200. And in the police, we all have nicknames. So CU Jimmy turned into his name and we all know him as Jimmy. So 24 years is a very significant time in the modern police force to be in a community policing role in one city. Normally, people either go for promotion or get moved out into different roles. But Jimmy was able to keep his role. And that's especially in the light of all the changes, cuts to the police service that have been made during that time. Over this time, he maintained, developed and progressed the city centre radio network that works with retail and licensed premises within the city and has been a great boon to sorting out a lot of the problems. This has resulted in him having a consistently high work and arrest rate. And he frequently topped the figures for the most arrests per year in the whole of the County of Sussex. This work led to a real sense of community with staff in the linked premises, working together for the safety of the city. This in both daytime and the nighttime economies. The inception of the Chichester Chaiback, Chichester Business Against Crime within the city, has been led a lot by his input. And that brought together even closer the police and the businesses in the city with exceptional results. As part of his role, he had a significant input into projects dealing with rough sleeping and homelessness in the district and wider force area. The people in Brighton were very interested in the way we operate in Chichester. As part of his role, he had, sorry, Jimmy carried out his duties firmly and with good humour and is respected by all those he came into contact with. And indeed, at one stage, there was a Facebook page dedicated to people who'd been arrested by him. Some of the comments probably couldn't be repeated. He assisted with the setup and training and liaison with the church-led City Angels Organisation. And he's been the face of the police within the city council, as well as district council in various departments that he dealt with there. So despite the cuts to the police force, Jimmy maintained these city centre contacts. And in the last couple of years, he was put into a unit that meant he was allocated to other areas. But strangely enough, he always seemed to manage to get back to Chichester and look after us. His retirement recently will leave a vacuum in the visible presence of the police on the streets of the city. Although I did read recently that someone may be replaced, be put into the city centre. And he has been a real servant to the community. And personally, having worked with him, I found him to be a very genial companion in all sorts of situations. And I commend him for this award. Thank you.
Oh, thank you very much, Mark. Now, I don't think Jimmy is with us tonight, but I'd just like to say that I also nominated Jimmy Upton for a Civic Award. He has been really one of those people who have made enormous contributions to Chichester. He's there. Everybody knows Jimmy Upton. Everybody knows the work that he does. And he's been there for many years. And I think it's old fashioned, if you like, policing in that he knew his community, he worked with his community and was a terrific man. And I always enjoyed talking with Jimmy. He always knew what was going on. He was a, he was very, very good in this job. So well deserved Civic Award. And I'll be going to the Centre's Award again on Friday. So thank you very much for that. Thank you, Mark.
Well, thank, thank you, Mr Mayor. Our third recipient tonight is David Sparrow. And if you've attended one of these events before, you'll see we did a first tonight in that we've had some former award winners read out the citations. There's another change tonight because due to the indisposition of the person who is reading out David Sparrow's citation, David, it's fallen to me. So just to let you know, don't worry about mentioning anything about a certain sports centre earlier. It's all safe. But let's, let's tell everyone about you. Because David Sparrow has been a major trustee and steward of what is known as the Old Deers Trust for over 20 years. Responsible for the welfare and maintenance of the almshouses at Riverside, Toews away. Recently, he was also a key member of the team overseeing the construction of four more almshouses. The Deers Trust is supported by the Corporation of St Pancras, which is known in Chichester as the Wheelbarrow Club, which was established in 1689. David has the principal role of what is known as the Recorder in that organisation. He's also been mayor and the proposer of the nomination, who happens to be one councillor, Richard Plamen, has written the word mayor in inverted commas. And as an alderman, he is the main organiser of the Wheelbarrow Club many events, including their annual dinner, which is now over 334 years old. And David, if I could say to the mayor, Mr Mayor, that is your citation which I've read out. I wonder, perhaps, as you've known David a long, long time, if you would like to add anything?
Yes, I would. I think the thing, David is a store, as far as the Deers Trust is concerned. Not only is he a trustee, but he's the man who looks after or has looked after the people there. He's been down there doing the maintenance. He's the one that's looked after it, made sure that everything worked down there. So he's put in an enormous amount of effort over the time. And I think he's been very much a part of the past. And I, of course, am so known as a part of the, well, I am now an alderman of the Corporation of St Pancras. And David is very, very peculiar or particular, I should say, in terms of referring it to the Corporation of St Pancras. He said the Wheelbarrow Club only came about really in sort of Victorian times. So it is the Corporation of St Pancras. And I know he's been extremely proud to do that and has organised many of the events. And as I said, we now are the oldest, established, continuous dining club in the UK. So the Corporation of St Pancras is one of the last remaining orange clubs in the country. So David, you've put in an enormous amount of work. You really deserve this award. So well done. Thank you. David, would you like to say a few words?
I would indeed. Mr Mayor, thank you and the councillor for honouring me for this award. I'm not sure if I am supposed to say this, but I also believe that Tony French had a hand in recommending me to you.
Yes, he did. He did.
I would have liked to have thanked him. Unfortunately, Tony is now with the Great Corporation in the sky. No doubt organising things there as he did down on earth. Anne and I have been, lived in Chichester for nearly 50 years. And we have involved ourselves with much that this splendid city has to offer. But never did I think that I would be put forward for a site. I thank you very much indeed.
Thank you, David, and thank you for mentioning Tony French. Someone many of us have known for many years. And Tony will be pleased. He couldn't let the opportunity go by without me just mentioning it. Of the two nominations, his one came in first. So. So now, we move on to Tim Schofield. And Tim's citation is going to be read by councillor Clare Apple.
Mr Mayor, past Civic Award holders, fellow councillors, ladies and gentlemen. The Reverend Canon Tim Schofield has been an exceptional presenter, a member of the dean and chapter at our magnificent cathedral. He also extended his spiritual services to become the mayor's chaplain and his guidance and advice were much appreciated. He has also been very much involved with the community. As presenter, he is responsible for creating services and selecting the hymns and music. Of particular note, forgive the pun, was the special cathedral evening song service for the Guildhall at the conclusion of Priory Park 100th anniversary celebrations. Evening song in the Guildhall transported us back to when it was the Grey Frazes Chapel. It was the very first time in the history of Priory Park such a service had been held. The choir and the music chosen by Tim Schofield made the experience very special indeed. Similarly, the special evening song on the anniversary of the death of our Chichester hero, Admiral Sir George Murray, Nelson's captain of the fleet and close friend. The appropriate choice of music with a strong nautical basis made the evening memorable. The same magic was there for the 100 years of the Rotary Club of Chichester's evening song. Amongst his duties are for the welfare of the dean and chapter. And there have been some challenges over the years, but he has remained a constant support and pillar throughout his 14-year before retiring. Tim's work at the cathedral has been fulfilling, interesting and varied. He recounts one unusual service. When there was the celebration of the 75th anniversary of the guide dogs for the blind. Everything was going well until one of the 100 dogs in the cathedral barked and then all hell broke loose. He also was instrumental in the Sunday Children's Ministry, also developed, and the Cathedral Pebbles Group, which was formed, which goes from strength to strength. Tim says this is almost entirely due to his wife Julie, who has always shared in ministry to children wherever they have been and her team of young parents. Tim has been part of the Chichester delegation on the visits to, on the last three COBO conferences. In the wake of Brexit, he felt these European partnerships have never been more important. So, Mr Mayor, I too have much pleasure in putting forward the Reverend Canon Tim Schofield for a Civic Award. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Well done. Tim, would you like to say a few words?
Thank you very much, Richard. Thank you so much for this Civic Award, which I feel most humbled and honoured to receive. One of the important roles, I believe, that the cathedral community has is to work for the flourishing of the city and its people. And it's been a real privilege over the last 14 years to work in some small way with local city councillors and councillors to try and build up our local community and enrich its life. And I look back with particular pleasure and gratitude at all of their collaborations. But as Claire mentioned, our particular promise for the evening song in the Guildhall in Priory Park. So thank you again so much for the award, which means a great deal to me. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And as I say, I'll be coming around to visit you in person. And I just wanted to say personally, then, thank you so much for all you've done and a well deserved Civic Award. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Our next recipient is David Nason and councillor Anne Secuner will read the citation.
Thank you. Mr Mayor, fellow councillors, honoured guests, ladies and gentlemen. It's my pleasure to present to you the Reverend Canon David Nason. David, your chaplain, Mr Mayor, came to Chichester in 1989 as priest vicar in the cathedral and chaplain to the Prependle School. Being initially appointed for three years, and this is the contract which was extended twice. As the minor canon of the cathedral, his job was to arrange and sing the services and pastor or care with the congregation. At school, he arranged assemblies and taught Latin and religious studies and also preparing the students for confirmation. David was then appointed as deputy head of the school and head of classics. Every year, he organised walking holidays during the summer break and at Easter for students and their parents, often to the capital cities of Europe. Mr Mayor, I well remember some years ago, and I think it was a mayoral function, when we listened to David's Prependle Students Concert Orchestra, bits and pieces in the Deanery Garden. David took this orchestra to Speaker's House for an after dinner concert for Baroness Boothroyd, who was then the speaker. But David hasn't only been concerned with cathedral and Prependle. Since 1994, he's been chaplain to 461 Squadron Royal Air Force Cadets in Chichester and is now chaplain for the whole of London and the South East Region Royal Air Force Cadets, for which he received a letter of appreciation from the Ministry of of Defence for his twenty-five years of service in that role. David served as chaplain to Mrs Denise Passerson while she was High Sheriff of West Sussex. And when Canon John Hester retired from the role, David became chaplain to the Festival Theatre. And as well as all this, he's served several mayors, including yourself, as Mayor's Chaplain. He's a governor of Bourne Community College and gives talks locally on opera and musical evenings. I remember a most interesting evening some years ago on Ivor Novello, where he sang the parts as well as told us about the life of the wonderful actor. He recently gave a most interesting talk on French opera composers to the Friends of Chart, on which he's also a committee member and affluent French speaker. David hasn't retired, and I suspect he's unlikely to, as on most Sundays he takes service in local churches, covering for clergy who are away for whatever reason. Mr Mayor, I warmly recommend David Nason for this civic award.
Thank you very much, councillor Sekluna. I just wanted to say that, as I know, that David is my chaplain, and the role of a chaplain is a very important one, and David is excellent in giving advice and helping and me talking over things. So there's a lot more to the Mayor's Chaplain than meets the eye, and I must admit, I couldn't wish for a better one than councillor, sorry, David Nason. So David, would you like to say a few words? Thank you.
Yes, please, Mr Mayor, I would. Mr Mayor, city councillors, ladies and gentlemen, thank you so much for the honour of this civic award, which I can assure you I greatly appreciate. Just after I arrived in Chichester in nineteen eighty-nine, initially, as you heard, just for three years, a wily, aged female member of the congregation looked me up and down closely and said, 'Welcome to Chichester, but you know, you can't call yourself a secession until you've been here at least thirty years.' At that time, it seemed to be a very unlikely prospect. Well, that landmark has been passed, and I have no desire to live anywhere else. I feel so privileged to live here in a city with so much to offer, our history, our culture, our theatre, our cathedral, and so much more. You notice that I am now using a possessive pronoun 'our', because thirty-plus years on, and now the holder of a city council civic award, I feel well able to call myself secession at last and to be mighty proud of it. Thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you, David.
Thank you, David. And now our final civic award recipient tonight is Rachel Osborne, and Rachel's citation is being read by past civic award winner Graham Poud.
Mayor, city councillors, distinguished guests, ladies and gentlemen, good evening. It gives me great pleasure personally to have been invited to read the citation to Rachel Osborne. We have known Rachel for almost twenty years, meeting her shortly after we joined the twinning associations. It was at the inaugural meeting to set up the Friends of Letter in two thousand and nine that with her inimitable spontaneity that she volunteered to be the membership secretary. One thing led to another, and Rachel has been one of the members instrumental for the great success of this friendship. She has played a key role in this association, not only as the secretary, but also as joint editor of Melita, the Members' Newsletter. She wholeheartedly backed the Three Cities Twinning Event in support of the Festival of Chichester. In Rachel's vocabulary, there is no such word as 'no'. Rachel moved to Chichester fifty-five years ago, living in cathedral close. She helped with the catering when the festivities started in nineteen seventy-five, and later she joined the Shopwick Singers, where she regularly sings on a Tuesday. She was chairman of the local branch of the Church of England Children's Society, and organised Christmas services in the cathedral, and helped with the box-opening children's parties at the Bishop's Palace. For over twenty years, Rachel has been working with a team selling Christmas cards for the Good Causes Charity. Since two thousand and one, she has become heavily involved with the canal, organising the schools' education trips and volunteering both on the boats and also in the shop. Mr Mayor, it is for her many contributions to the city that she thoroughly deserves the civic award for twenty twenty.
Thank you very much, Graham, thank you. I must admit that Rachel is one of those people that wherever I go in Chichester, whatever function, Rachel is always there doing things. And Rachel, it's been an enormous contribution made, and she's very well deserved this civic award, so I think, would you like to say a few words?
Yes, thank you. Mr Mayor, councillors, ladies and gentlemen, I'm very honoured to receive this award, and I thank Graham for his citation. I must say that I would not have become so involved with so many things had it not been for the encouragement and support of that Tony French. And of course, as Graham says, I'm just a girl who can't say no. Thank you very much.
Well done.
Rachel, thank you, thank you very much. We now move on to our second category, ladies and gentlemen, community awards. This is a comparatively new category, which is given for the rather obvious category of service to our community. And of course, as many of you will know, the beating heart of Chichester rests with so many voluntary organisations. Our first award is to the Chichester Youth Adventure Trust, and the citation will be read by councillor Claire April.
I have turned my mute off. Mr Mayor, fellow councillors, honoured guests, ladies and gentlemen. The Chichester Youth Adventure Trust was formed in nineteen eighty-four as the Chichester Mayor's charity, and the Mayor at that time was councillor Anne Sekluna. The purpose was to set up a centre in Wild Country where young people from the Chichester area could spend a few days away from home, learning to work together, and also to experience a different environment from their normal one. It would also serve to accommodate Duke of Edinburgh's awards, schemes, expeditions at gold level, and to house school field trips, learning botany, ecology, and many other subjects. An old woodman's cottage in the Brecon National Park in South Wales, three-quarters of a mile up a mountain, and set in one and a quarter acres of land, was purchased and renovated. The funds were raised from various activities through the year, and every youth club, school, college, and young people's organisation in Chichester raised what funds they could, from a sixty pounds raise cleaning cars to two thousand pounds for a sponsored silence in one of the schools. Set up as a charitable trust in February nineteen eighty-four, is still run by a volunteer group of dedicated people experienced in working with teenagers. A local caretaker in South Wales liaises with the local workmen, who may be engaged to undertake tasks and ensure that it is clean and nice for the groups to arrive and checks their leave in similar conditions. The trustees themselves go there several weekends each year to do work, checking the track, painting inside, and liaising with the local sheep farmer, who is very helpful and friendly. The centre sleeps twenty-nine people and has all facilities, including central heating and its own spring water, which is checked by the local environmental health officer a couple of times each year. At first, groups of young people went there for weekends, spending their mornings helping to renovate the place, learning skills in building, gardening, dry stone wall erection, etc., and their afternoons doing adventurous activities such as rock climbing, caving, canoeing, hillwalking, mountain biking, pony trekking, and lots of other things. Many undertake marvellous walks along the trail of seven great waterfalls. Thirty-seven years later, and literally thousands of our young people have benefited from this facility, which now has a three-star rating as a bunkhouse, the highest rating available for this type of accommodation. Schools, scouts, pre-service groups, team-building groups, Duke of Edinburgh's awards scheme, youth clubs, probationary groups, as well as leader training weekends. It is in especially high demand for weekends and school holidays. New Year is one of the most popular times, as no celebration noise disturbs the neighbours, all of which are sheep. So I think this really deserves the award that is being put out for. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you very much, councillor. I don't know whether anybody wants to speak from the Youth Adventure Trust, but does anybody just want to say a few words, or do we move on?
Yes, yes, Mr Mayor, I could say just a couple of words. My thunder has been stolen, because I think that Claire must have seen my script, or someone else must have seen my script, because it is, my script is virtually the same as the one that's just been given to you. But to reiterate the fact that the charity was founded some thirty-seven years ago, and it is really solely at that time due to the efforts of Anne Sekluna, who founded this charity for the benefit of young people. And as has been said, it was seen and saw that young people should be engaged in outdoor adventurous activities for their personal, social education, and that it was a good way of developing work skills to enable them to take their place in societies, mature adults in a changing world. And as has been said, well, what hasn't been said is we've been told that the place is in South Wales, and it's a place called Tyne Morgul, but you may wonder why it's in South Wales and not on the South Dams. But the reality is that the South Dams is really not an adventurous enough environment to do the adventurous activities that Anne, in her wisdom, thought that they should punish their bodies with, and the leaders that took them. So the area that the bunkhouse is situated in is in the southern part of the Brecon Beacons, the national park, beautiful area, and for any of you that have been to that area, you'll know that it is certainly a wild place with caves and crags, and hills and rivers and gorges, which will test any young person's resolve when they're involved in activities there. I don't know how many thousand people have been there, but it is thousands and thousands. And many of those people have now become involved with the trust, and have returned to the trust as volunteers, leading groups. Others have helped on work party visits and in advisory capacity, and a special few have even become trustees. So to say that Anne's ambitions have now been recognised, and for her and the many volunteers have made this possible, it is a mission accomplished. As to the future, Tyne Morgul, the bunkhouse, still has a place to play, because its legacy for the young people of Chichester will be that the trust has a project to plant an area of their land for carbon capture, recreational activity, and environmental improvement as a positive initiative towards saving the planet. And finally, to reiterate again, none of this could have happened, A, without Anne, and secondly, without the dedication and efforts of the so many volunteers that have contributed to making the place what it is now. So thank you very much for this nomination, and can I pass on my thanks from the trustees as well? Thank you.
Okay, and thank you very much for that, and I'd just like to say thank you. I know that many, many people have actually enjoyed their experience, and it's actually been very worthwhile for them, particularly at a time when they're trying to find their way in the world, and to give them that sort of adventure, forget them, to make them more independent, to learn about, is a very worthwhile activity. So well done, thirty-seven years, it's not bad going, and let's hope you go for the next thirty-seven years. So thank you very much for that, thank you.
Thank you.
John, thank you very much indeed. Our next community award goes to the Chichester Child Contact Centre, and the nomination will be read by councillor Sarah Shaw.
Thank you. Mr Mayor, fellow councillors, former award holders, ladies and gentlemen. It is my pleasure to present to you Chichester Child Contact Centre. This centre might be something that you may have lived in Chichester for many years and never come across, or you maybe never heard about, but for some families, this centre is a true lifeline and helps families through troubling and difficult times. The Contact Centre was set up in nineteen ninety-six and provides a safe place for children whose parents are no longer living together, to meet with professional support and supervision. It meets on alternate Saturdays and has continued to meet almost without any breaks, except for a short one due to the first lockdown since nineteen ninety-six. Indeed, in the local area, while other nearby centres have closed, our Chichester centre is continuing to operate now, although under strict Covid-secure rules, the way it functions is a little bit different. The centre is child-led and centred. After relationship breakdowns, which can be traumatic situations for all concerned, the centre provides a safe space in which to start to make reconnections between the child and the non-resident parent. The centre is blessed with the expertise and commitment of a large group of volunteers who ensure that all sessions are run safely. Most of the volunteers have worked or work in education or health fields and have relevant experience of the issues involved. This group is relied upon by the courts and the police, and families are referred by many agencies, including the Family Centre and the Citizens Advice Bureau. It isn't funded or run by local councils, statutory bodies, or by national government. It's a voluntary group, and yet it is an essential service for people when relationships are tense and tempers frayed. It provides a safe space where, it's usually the dads especially, can make a fresh start and reconnect with their children, and in normal times, they can learn from the other fathers and benefit from each other's experience and mutual support. When I originally thought of this award, we actually only had the category for individuals. Anne Wales, who I knew volunteered at the group, was adamant that it was the whole team, the whole group, that needed recognition for their service to Chichester. So I'm really pleased to say that now we have this relatively new category to nominate the group. Kathleen has undoubtedly been a great leader, sorting out all the necessary backup work, liaising with the courts and judges and the police, but it is the whole team that we recognise this evening for having turned around the lives of many families, for having eased and soothed relationships, and having absorbed pent-up anger. Kathleen told me she was proud of the fact that in all the time she had worked at the centre, none of the parents had ever used bad language in her presence. This group turns anger around and facilitates new starts in families' lives. So, Mr Mayor, I commend to you the Chichester Child Contact Centre for a community award.
Thank you very much, councillor. And what wonderful work they're doing, and very necessary in these days. So I wondered if there was anybody from the... So I wondered if there was anybody from the Chichester Child Contact Centre who'd like to say a few words?
Yes, please. Hello. Mister Mayor, councillors, ladies and gentlemen, on behalf of all our volunteers and our volunteer trustees, thank you for honouring us with this presentation of this Community Award. The restrictions imposed by the current pandemic has brought into sharp focus how deprived we all feel without face-to-face contact with our family, especially young children. So you can imagine the joy expressed by children who meet their father, or increasingly, their mother, after months of absence. I haven't written this down, but it struck me that Saffir gave us a thousand pounds because we'd helped so many service families just after the Iraq War and Afghanistan, and already, even now, because soldiers, servicemen move away, families break up, and we're helping them still. For twenty-five years, our volunteers have enabled children to meet their non-resident parents and wider family. We have grandparents who come as well. The children miss out so much by not having half their family's love. The volunteers support these families, prioritising the safety, the emotional health, and the physical wellbeing of each child for as long as it's needed. And that's at no charge or extra charge, however long that child needs, they can stay. So thank you for this most appreciated recognition of our work.
It should be I thanking you for all the wonderful work you've done. So thank you very much for that, thank you.
Thank you very much indeed. And our final Community Award recipient tonight is the Chichester Area Talking News. And the citation will be read by councillor Debbie Carter.
Sorry. Thank you. Mister Mayor, fellow councillors, honourable guests, ladies and gentlemen. I would just like to quickly say that Anne Secunna very kindly wrote this for me. I think she asked me to do it because as a councillor, I'm also partially sighted. So you'll just have to bear with me, even with modern technology, it's not always easy. But I will give it my best go. Now, for over forty years old, Chichester Area Talking News was founded by Elaine Boden, sorry, Elaine Brown, to bring news and items of interest to people with poor eyesight and a large band, a large band of volunteers, produces a fortnightly news programme and a quarterly magazine, all spoken by local readers. A team of producers in rotation, each fortnight, purchase the three local observers and pick out the interesting items of news. They plan the programme and choose which readers are chosen for their good speaking voices. Read each item, and another team plans the quarterly magazine, thinking of items which will interest listeners and asking local people to tell their experiences or share their knowledge. All this is recorded in a small studio situated near the entrance of St Richard's Hospital. It is copied around five hundred times and sent out to listeners free of charge by the Royal Mail. Listeners are supplied with a equipment which to play the news and the magazine on, and are visited by helpers to ensure that they are happy and to sort out any problems. A very happy annual dinner is held for the listeners, including a few guide talks, which sit quietly underneath the tables, probably hoping, but not always, for a little treat. This is a life-enhancing experience for a large number of local people with sight problems. All the workers and the committee are dedicated volunteers, many of whom have served for many, many years, and some of whom have lost their own sight. During the pandemic, Chichester Area Talking News has managed to keep most of its services going, often recording in their own homes and keeping in contact with the listeners, many of the whom have been isolated during the lockdown. Where it has not been possible to send out a programme, the listeners have been telephoned by the volunteers to ensure that they are all well and have someone to talk to. It is interesting that this is such a wonderful organisation, as well as the founder, Elaine Brown herself. Five committee members have themselves been recipients of the Chichester Civic Awards. Thank you, Mister Mayor, and ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you, thank you very much, councillor Carter. And not easy, so well done, thank you very much. I just, before I ask somebody from the Talking News to speak, I'd just like to say that I had a wonderful sort of experience. The AGM that the Talking News run is exceptionally good. And I remember I was giving a little talk up front there, and there were three ladies in the front row there who unfortunately couldn't see at all. And at a later point, at another meeting, I saw the same three ladies sitting there, and I went over and I said hello. And one of the ladies said, I hope you don't mind me being a little rude, she said, but we're waiting for the mayor to come, and he's a very nice man, you know. So anyway, I'd like to perhaps ask somebody from the wonderful organisation, the Chichester Area Talking News, to perhaps talk to us, thank you.
Well, thank you very much. Can I reply on behalf of Chichester Area Talking News? Mister Mayor, councillors, ladies and gentlemen. Can I thank particularly councillor Debbie Carter? I was very, very touched that you, with your disability, felt that you wanted to make this presentation. Also, very, very grateful to Anne Secunna, who is such a great supporter of the organisation, and also to you, Mister Mayor, because I know you're a very enthusiastic supporter of the work that we do. So I'd be very happy indeed to accept this on behalf of a fantastic team of volunteers. We're all volunteers, we don't have any paid staff, and we have three hundred plus blind and partially sighted listeners. Both categories are represented here tonight. John Holloway here is a very, very professional head of production. John, can you give everyone a wave? And then you've already made it. He was here with his wife, Chris, also Chris, and their lovely guide dog, Kenny, who you, I think, saw just now. Chris and Chris are trustees, as is John Holloway. It's a fantastic organisation. We have three hundred plus listeners who are either blind or partially sighted. And also, it's not limited to people who are blind and partially sighted, because anyone can listen to our service, which is completely free, over the airwaves. You just go on to our website, and you can listen to the programmes. And you can listen to it on Zoom and all sorts of other marvellous contraptions. It provides a very, very important service to a lot of blind and partially sighted people and people with other disabilities across the whole area. And as you'll appreciate, many of these people are feeling very lonely, isolated, and vulnerable at the moment. So throughout the pandemic, we've managed to keep going by broadcasting our programmes, although we haven't been able all the time to record and send them out on memory sticks, as we normally do. We're hoping to start that again as soon as we possibly can. But it's a highly valued service. It's been going, as you've said, for forty-six years now, since nineteen seventy-five, doing a tremendous amount of work, which is highly valued by everyone. The listeners tell us regularly how much it means to them, how much they look forward on a Saturday morning to hearing that yellow envelope pop through the letterbox containing the memory stick with our recorded programmes on. And four times a year, we record a news, a particular magazine, a news magazine that goes out in a red wallet. And again, people say that's tremendously important to them, and they look forward enormously to it. So thank you very much indeed for this award. It means a great deal to us. It's a very hard-working organisation, and it's marvellous to have recognition in this way. It'll be a great boost to all our volunteers. Thank you very much indeed, highly appreciated.
Thank you very much, and thank you, Dick. Can I just say that I know we all appreciate the amount of work and effort you put into the organisation itself. So thank you very much for all that you do, thank you. Right, I think that actually brings all the presentations to an end. And so it just remains for me to really congratulate you all. I think we've heard some wonderful speeches today about some excellent organisations and people that are making a wonderful contribution to Chichester. So my congratulations to all those Civic Award winners and all the Community Award winners is very well done, and all of them, as you heard, very well deserved, so thank you for that. I'd just also like to say thank you to the officers, and particularly to Gareth Bowen there, because getting something like this together and making it all work is no mean feat. So I'd like to thank you particularly, Gareth, for all the work you've done behind us and for it to go in well. The good thing about Zoom is that there are a couple of things. You don't have to wear a mask while we're having it, which is very helpful. And the other thing that I don't have to say, safe journey home. So thank you very much. I think it's been a very special evening. I'm actually moved by the presentations and the awards that are being given. So thank you very much. And of course, we'll all get together with a very special evening for all the Civic Award winners, including yourselves. We can celebrate properly together, which I'm really looking forward to. So thank you once again, and as I say, at least you don't have to go very far to go home. Thank you.